Mr. Roberts is here. Evening, Mr. Roberts. Hi.
I'm just picking on you.
All right, guys, we'll go live. We go live to about 10,000 people here in about, in about five seconds.
10,000? Where'd you get that number?
Huh?
10,000?
Yeah. Well, we have every home in Temecula. Well, how many people?
You think everybody's watching this?
How many homes are in Temecula, Patrick? Do you recall?
Twenty-five thousand.
About 25,000. Okay, so you've got a third of the homes, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, 5,000 homes. 5,000 homes. Okay, live from City Hall, it's Tuesday night! Here we go. We are in session. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
All right. Welcome to the Temecula City Council Meeting. It is October the 8th, Tuesday, and at 7:00 PM. Let's see here. Who played that beautiful prelude music for us? Who was that?
Four people.
Who did we have, Susan? I don't see it in my prompts.
Anna Stone, Alexa Willis, Fiona Harley.
Got it. Thank you. Anna Stone, where are you? Anna, stand up.
Aww.
Alexa Willis. Hi, Alexa, you gotta stand. Fiona Har- Harley? No, no, there you are. And Ron Lichen. Ron, where are you? Hey there, buddy, good job.
Did we miss anybody?
No.
There was one more kid back there.
Was there? I got everybody, didn't I?
Okay.
Yeah, I thought so. Thank you.
Good.
I appreciate that. Okay, we're gonna kick off the meeting with an invocation by Pastor Bill Kate of Trinity Lutheran Church. Pastor, good to see you. Always good to start off with a prayer. And then we're gonna ask you to remain standing for the flag salute. And we have a guest here from Eastern Municipal Water District, Mr. Paul Jones. Would you lead us in the flag salute, sir? Thank you. Please stand.
We pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we live simultaneously in two kingdoms. The kingdom of the right hand, where you rule supreme, and the kingdom of the left hand, where you have established government. In this earthly kingdom, you have appointed men and women to positions of authority where they work on your behalf to provide for our needs. We pray that you would bless each leader here with wisdom and knowledge and a sincere desire to serve rather than be served. I pray all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Jones, if you would, remain standing for our flag salute.
Thank you. Will you please follow me in saluting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam City Clerk, can you please call the role of my distinguished colleagues?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Camachero is absent. Edwards?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Washington?
I wouldn't be anywhere else.
And Mayor Nigar.
I wanna be wherever Chuck's at. Okay. And Councilmember Camachero's in Washington DC on city business, I'm told. We're gonna move over to presentations and proclamations. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for giving us our flag salute. I wanna call Mr. Jones back up. Mr. Jones is the general manager for Eastern Municipal Water District, and he has a presentation for us. Paul, good to have you here tonight.
Thank you very much, Mayor Nigar, members of the council. I'm here on behalf of Eastern Municipal Water District. I wanna talk about regional water issues. Tonight, I'd like to focus on the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, and I wanna try to put that in context for the city council, why that's important, what's going on up there, and what it means to our local region. First, a little bit before I get started about Eastern Municipal. We basically are a wholesale and retail water, wastewater and recycle water agency. We serve a population of about 768,000 residents here in Riverside County, including providing wastewater services to the city of Temecula. We are also a Metropolitan Water District Southern California Member Agency. For those who are not familiar with Metropolitan, they are the regional water importer for Southern California. They extend from Ventura County to the Mexican border and east here to Riverside County. In fact, Eastern Municipal Water District is because we are the easternmost Metropolitan Member Agency. And they import water into the region from two important sources. One is the Colorado River Aqueduct, in which they own, and the second is the State Water Project, which we're going to talk a little bit about tonight. The State Water Project brings water from the San Francisco Bay Delta Estuary down the California Aqueduct and brings supplies into Southern California. Now, in our service area, in this part of Southern California, we've done a great job in developing local water resources. However, we live in a very dry area, and we have made substantial investments in local groundwater projects and water use efficiency. And as a result, we are about 45% of local supplies, including water recycling, water use efficiency, and local groundwater. And we're about 55% reliant on imported water. And about half of that comes through the State Water Project. So, when I talk about the State Water Project and the San Francisco Bay Delta Estuary, it's very important to our local water supply picture. The first slide here shows the San Francisco Bay Delta Estuary. It's really considered the hub of water supplies in all of California. In fact, if you look at the Bay Delta, it provides drinking water for about 25 million Californians. And basically, 33% of the water supply in the Bay Area, as well as down here in Southern California, about 30%. In the Central Valley, where most of America's, about half of America's food and vegetables are grown, it provides upwards of 90% of the water in some areas. And so, it's a very significant source of supply. It also supports a $27 billion agricultural economy in the Central Valley and a similarly sized economy in Southern California and Central California. So, it's very important. The water that comes from the Delta is exported through pumps that pump water out of the bottom of the Delta. And as this map shows you, that you can see in front of you, you have two rivers that feed into the Delta. The Sacramento River on the north, that brings about 2/3 of the water, and the San Joaquin River on the south, that brings about 1/3 of the water. If you can see the picture in the upper right-hand corner, it shows the picture of the Delta. And the Delta is not a natural ecosystem. It is a very heavily farmed area. It's been farmed for over 100 years, highly altered ecosystem. There's been numerous man-made levees that have been put in place to protect the adjacent farmland. That farmland has been farmed for over 100 years and has actually subsided, so it is below sea level. So, you have a very fragile levee system that conveys water through the Delta. If you look at the bottom of the picture, you see two yellow dots and lines. Those are the locations of the pumps that take water out of the Delta to Central California and Southern California. And with 2/3 of the water coming through the top, and the water being taken out of the bottom of the Delta, and this network of canals and sloughs and channels that are protected by these man-made levees that are not built to engineering standards, core of engineering standards, they were built, some of them, 80 or 90 years ago. The Delta is certainly at risk of flooding. Should that flooding occur, seawater were intrude in the Delta, and it would disturb our ability to export water out of the Delta. These are the key risks that we're seeing as a result of that ecosystem. There's declines in the fisheries because of that highly altered ecosystem. There's substantial seismic risk. There's a probability of a 66%, probability of a greater than 6.5 earthquake in the Delta, based on a study by UC Berkeley, by 2035. Such an earthquake could cause levee failure and could cause saltwater to intrude in the Delta, and that would, again, alter our ability to import water to Southern California. As a result, in 2009, the legislature of the state and then the governor signed into law a very comprehensive plan to address restoring the Delta and improving the water supply reliability. And it was one of the few plans ever adopted for the Delta that looked at what they called co-equal goals, specifically ecosystem restoration for the Delta, as well as conveyance improvements to secure the water supply that's exported from the Delta. The plan uses a multi-species conservation plan approach to protect the endangered species. Even though it's a highly altered ecosystem, there's over 750 plant, animal, and bird species, as well as numerous listed and endangered species in the Delta. And at the same time, it proposes conveyance improvements that would include a tunnel system to convey water out of the Delta and avoid some of the seismic risk and catastrophic levee failures that, based on studies just released, showed a potential $40 billion state economic impact of a water supply that may be disturbed from 1 and 1/2 to 3 years out of the Delta. The environmental restoration plan is very comprehensive. It's over 113,000 acres of restoration. If you think of a wetlands restoration plan that we do in our areas, and you look at something at that magnitude, it's really unprecedented. So, the option that's being considered, and you will hear about this, is a tunnel system. That tunnel system solves a very basic plumbing problem. 2/3 of the water is sourced from the Sacramento River, and the water currently is being pumped out after it goes through all these levees, canals, and sloughs from the southern portion of the Delta. The current pumping patterns cause reverse flows in the Delta and are not conducive to the species that live in the Delta. So, as a result, the tunnel system will take some of the water out of the Sacramento River, bring that under the Delta in a 30-mile tunnel system to a forbay in the southern part of the Delta where it will be pumped. This will, from an environmental standpoint, allow the natural flow regime to resume in the Delta on the Sacramento and San Joaquin River. It will also protect, in case of a catastrophic levee failure, against salinity intruding into the water supply by having water conveyed directly from the Sacramento River down to the pumping forbay that can then be pumped into Southern California. So, it does provide substantial environmental benefits, along with the environmental restoration, as well as a secured water supply. The cost is 12 to 14 billion dollars. It seems like a big number compared to bullet trains. It's very affordable and actually does something. But the project is spread amongst all those water purveyors in Central and Southern California. So, when you spread the costs over the Metropolitan Service Area, it's about $5 to $6 per household per month. In our area, probably even a little less than that, because we've made investments in local supplies, so we're not as dependent on imported water. So, the next steps in the process, we're asking people, and we're speaking to a lot of community groups, a lot of other cities, business organizations, is to really use some of the resources that are available and educate yourself. This is a very complex project and process. It's not, as somebody said, a good elevator speech. You can't explain to them, going from the first floor to the fifth floor, what this is. And so, it is very complex. There is a draft environmental document that is coming out in mid-November. We're asking the jurisdictions in this area and cities to express support for the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, for moving the project forward that recognizes these co-equal goals. Help us get the word out. Give us suggestions of who we should speak to, as far as community groups. Help us give support to our state and federal legislators, as they're asked to authorize expenditures for the Bay Delta. And then ultimately, we'd like to bring back to the council the resolution supporting the Bay Delta Conservation Plan and the preferred alternative, which we believe balances very well the water supply interests, as well as the environmental interests in the Delta. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Jones?
So, we will be coming back with the resolution, and we certainly appreciate the council's support on that.
Sounds good. And while it wasn't an elevator speech, you went up and down a few times. You probably could've got it done in three or four trips.
Yes.
You did good.
I appreciate the time afforded me to give the presentation.
Thank you. And just one comment from me in concern, since this is a large project, and it looks like EMWD is representing our area, or our interests for the area. Do you feel confident that they'll keep costs under control? That they'll bring this in on budget? That they won't come back to the taxpayers or the ratepayers and say, "Listen, we need, we need more"? What's your thought on that?
Well, I think the cost estimates are being kept very contemporary. It isn't a cost estimate that's an old cost estimate. They're trying to keep that updated and take into respect. In fact, the project was just valued and engineered to reduce some of the costs by shortening the tunnels, reducing the number of intakes, and so forth. I think the other driver, and what's interesting, is the tunnel system itself is gonna be paid for by the water purveyors, not general obligation bonds, not statewide revenues. And the water purveyors are forming a joint powers authority to actually construct those facilities. And so, I think there'll be good cost containment there. The environmental restoration would be paid for by a future water bond, because it's a statewide benefit. And so, I think those costs will be determined by themselves. But I think the cost for the facilities are gonna be contained, because we all have to pay the water bills to go with that.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna move into the public comment portion of our meeting. I noticed we have a lot of students here today. Tell me, where are my plumas? Oh, okay, we got, we got three plumas in the house. Okay, oh, okay. How about my wolf pack? Oh, we got one wolf.
App.
We got one wolf in the background there. Okay, well, I guess the rest of you are golden bears? Let's see the hands. Yeah, the golden bears are in the house.
Golden bears.
All right. Oh, we got some rancho here?
Yeah, we got bears.
Okay, all right. All right. Hey, welcome, you guys. Hey, we really love having you. So, I'm gonna kind of explain things as we go, so you know how your government operates, and you can do your reports and get an A. We're gonna go to the public comment portion of the meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. We have six.
Six, okay. We allot a half an hour to do that, and so, at 3 minutes each, that puts us at about 18 minutes, so we can do it. I'm gonna read a set of rules. Of course, you young folks can go ahead and put a speaker slip in, if you wanna talk to the council about anything at all. A total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to 3 minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, the request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the council addressing that item, and there's a 5-minute speaking limit for that. So, we're gonna go ahead, Madam City Clerk, and call our first speaker.
Wendy Bankston, to be followed by Judy Zilfiger.
Ms. Bankston, come forward. Pull that mic down, so we can hear you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for having me. I work at the local district attorney's office, victim services, domestic violence unit. And I don't know how this goes up here, but we wanted to make you aware of the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which is October. Is there a...
There you go.
Without going into any of the facts, they're on the overhead there. There have been, in the last less than 6 months, 2 domestic violence homicides in the city. So, I wanted to make sure that, and we wanted to make sure that you were aware of this issue in the city. And we're fighting really hard to help the victims of domestic violence. I work at the Family Justice Center on Technology in Winchester. And we invite you to all come on down and visit the Family Justice Center, see what we're doing there, what services we're providing to victims of domestic violence. And we're also, we also have another program. It's called Linda Hand Unite in Abuse. And we do this every Thursday in October. We're putting on the... It's a campaign. And what they're doing is they're using their hands, and they're doing kind of an artwork where we're actually using... We had a few of the deputies, and we had some of the community members come down, and they, it's a social participation, I guess, art project. But you use your hand as a canvas, and we've had some really creative ones. We put, we post them up on our website. Our website is also on this page here, the RivCo FJC. So, it's a fun project, but it's also raising a lot of awareness. We're getting kids in there, we're getting people that work with the city, we're getting all kinds of folks coming down, and they get creative, and they put things on their hand to raise awareness, and it's all about ending domestic violence. So, we invite you to come down, and we hope you'll visit us.
Wendy, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker, please.
Judy Zilfiger, to be followed by Gillian Larson.
Judy, good evening.
Thank you so much for having us out here this evening. I'd really like to invite the council and the community to a very important event that's coming up on October 19th. It's called the Color of Courage Fun Run and Walk, and you can walk in this one. It will be out at Big Horse Feed and Mercantile, excuse me, which is on the corner of Butterfield Stage and Temecula Parkway. And this is a very special run. We will have a guest, Gary Sinise. It is to benefit the Gary Sinise Foundation, and he will be at our event. He will be doing a guest appearance there and giving out the awards as well. And this is really to benefit his foundation, which, of course, is very important to our military and our first responders. So, we're celebrating that and celebrating that in our community. The Color Run is a fun, unique twist on your typical 5K. You actually start the race with a flurry of color. It's literally spread all over everyone. And as they're running through the, through the race, they are also getting pelted with wonderful colors. So, you come out looking like a rainbow, and everybody is celebrating. Again, that's on October 19th. We are taking registrations now, and that can happen at bighorsecornmaze.com. So, we'd really like to invite everyone out. It's gonna be a fun day. As you may know, the Big Horse Ranch has quite a lot of activity going on in October with the corn maze itself. So, those that come and run the race can then enjoy and get themselves lost in the maze and enjoy all the wonderful activities. So, again, Colors of Courage on October 19th. You can register now, register at the day of the event, and that it's at bighorsecornmaze.com. We hope to see you there.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Gillian Larson, to be followed by Rose Corona.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and everybody, and Temecula, please listen up. So, just in case you didn't know, I tried for 8 years to get on Survivor, and all those 8 years, people said, "Why?". And I said, "I can't explain it." But what I can tell you is it's because I can. I'm healthy enough, I'm strong enough, I can do it, and I live in a magnificent country where we can do anything we want to do, if we want to. And a huge part of that is due to the freedom that is protected by our military. So, Survivor didn't do much for me in the game, sadly, you probably know that story, but I've been able to do so much more with it afterwards. So, I am working with Colors of Courage to help support the military, to bring an extra focus to this awesome Color Run. I mean, you're gonna get sprayed with this color. Nearly knocked that over. And have, I am bringing 20 Reality Stars to Temecula from 10 different shows, who also want to lend their celebrity to the Colors of Courage, so that we can draw in a few more people and help raise more money for Michelle's pla... Um, excuse me, sorry, wrong event. So, it is breast cancer month, for the Colors of Courage, because I totally believe in supporting the military and whatever they do. So, I'm lending my celebrity, because if a little old lady from Temecula can get on Survivor, then we can do anything we want to, and it's thank you to our military all over the country for doing this. So, Temecula, city council members, everybody, please come out. Big Horse Feed, October 19th, starts the first wave at 8 o'clock, 8:30, and come and get pelted with color. And also, we have a colored dunk tank. I would really like, I have Reality Stars under the colored dunk tank. I would love somebody from our city council to come and sit under the colored dunk, and we will be charging for the balls. Every time the target is hit, it means money for the Gary Sinise Foundation, and you will be pelted with color, so...
I nominate the mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would love to talk to you later.
I'll second that.
You're seconding that you're gonna sit there, too? So, both of you will be on there? Under there? All right, we're gonna talk. So, thank you so much, Colors of Courage, Big Horse Feed, Reality Stars, Military Awesome, Gary Sinise, come on out, please, Temecula, listen up.
I'm curious, Gillian, what are they pelted with as they run?
It is...
Colored rocks? Is it paintballs?
Oh, no. It is colored powder. It actually stems from the festival Spring in India.
Right.
And it's colored cornstarch, so it's hypoallergenic.
Right.
And each station will be a different color, and we have volunteers, we have about 90 volunteers coming in to help, tossing color all over everybody. So, yeah, it's just powder.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and I wanna see you all there. I wanna pelt you.
You can do that. It's just powder.
No, Mr. Roberts will do it. Mr. Roberts will be there. Next speaker, please.
Rose Corona.
Ms. Corona, good evening to you.
Good evening. I'm not quite as eloquent as these ladies, so I'm gonna have to read what I have, and I thank you all for your time. For those of you who don't know, as she said, my name's Rose Corona, and I'm a member of the Corona family, who owns the Corona Ranch and Big Horse Feed and Mercantile. And as many of you know, our family has been farming our property on Highway 79 since 1972. My father, Jim Corona, moved us here from Cucamonga, before it was Rancho Cucamonga, because we needed farmland, due to the fact that we were getting overrun by development. And I remember distinctly him saying, "Well, let's move to Temecula. Nobody will move there." And we even had a sign on our property that said, "Temecula, population 200". And in those days, I think that included the dogs, because if it had a pulse, we counted it in the census. Obviously, we've seen a lot of changes over the years, and have seen a lot of large swaths of raw crop agriculture move away from the area, from potatoes to beautiful fields of gladiolas. And as a, as a result, this has left us as the last row crop farm left in Temecula. But during October, there aren't many people who aren't aware of our Harvest Festival and Corn Maze activities. Every year, it is an opportunity to give back, and as many of you know, this 12-acre corn maze each year is dedicated to our military. Not only since they usually are the only ones that can fly over it and actually see the design, it gives us great pride to know that, from the air, they can see that we support what they do for us. But more importantly, as I said this last summer to a group of students at the General Tommy Frank's Leadership Foundation, they are the ones that volunteer and step up to defend our freedom, so that we can live in a country in relative safety, knowing that someone unselfishly is willing to stand between us and a bullet. It is because of them that we may be here today to do what we do. None of us would be able to do what we do in this country, or enjoy the freedom that we do, if it weren't for the sacrifices made by our brave men and women in uniform and their families. And with this opportunity that brings us, we donate many of our proceeds to the United States Marine Corps, the Medal of Honor Foundation, the Special Operations Warrior Foundation, and of course, the Gary Sinise Foundation, all of which are worthy causes. I know that many groups or organizations over the years have come to the city council, asking for monetary support for their causes, but that's not why I'm here tonight. Many of you have met Mr. Sinise and support his concerts that he has here. But this event, the Colors of Courage, is to help augment and add to the donations for his worthy foundation. The Courage, the Colors of Courage walk run, along with a portion of the proceeds we take in that day, from the activities around the event, will benefit that charity.
Rose?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt you, but your time's up.
Can I just say one more thing?
I'm afraid not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You've had your 3 minutes, and I think you were very articulate.
Well, I just hope that you all know that there are lots of people that would love for you to come out and have you to the corn maze and tell you to either get lost, or that you're all wet if we get dumped by your water.
Thank you, Rose. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Mark.
Hello. Excuse me, my name is Mr. Mark, Mr. Leland Mark. This is directed to you, Mr. Washington. Were you the mayor last year about this time? That's a yes or no question.
Mr. Mark, if you'd just address the council.
Yes. Well, I am asking him for a public apology for defecating on my name, saying that I ripped up his political signs, which I didn't. I called him and told him his trash is here on Margarita. He went to the newspapers. Do not smirk, sir. He went to the newspapers, stated that I said I ripped up his signs. I did not. He's a pervericator, and you know what that means. I'm asking for a public apology. Is that too much to ask, sir?
Mr. Mark, this is not a time for dialogue with the council.
No, no, I understand, but he put it in the newspaper's front page.
Hold on. Shh, 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 shh. It's not a time to dialogue with the council.
No, I'm not. I just want them to know what a character this gentleman is. He's not a gentleman.
Understood. Take your three minutes. You have two minutes left.
And that's it. I said enough. I made my point. He's a pervericator. He made the story up, and it made the front page. He defecated on my name and structure, and I don't go for that. He's lucky I didn't sue him, and I can do that. And it's not a threat.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Wayne Hall.
Mr. Hall, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening. I was at the planning commission meeting last Wednesday, and I go there because I learned a lot about Temecula and what's going on. We have the eastern bypass, the western and northern bypass. And shortly afterward, actually the next day, we had a meeting with some friends over in Red Hawk, and they said that if this next project comes in, which I support, and the city passes it, all the infill on the portion south of Temecula Creek is full. I mean, it's done. There is no more infill down there. Well, one of my friends asked, he says, "Well, isn't there a bridge that's supposed to go across?" I says, "Oh, yeah, yeah. It's on the CIP. It's coming up in maybe four, five, six years." Well, the question was asked, well, if all the building is complete on the south side of Temecula, can we move the bridge up a little quicker? Now, I understand you're doing an eastern bypass right now. You're getting ready to do the western bypass. You're in the midst of the northern bypass, but can we get that project started? You know, just get the ball starting, you know, the gathering of facts and so on and so forth. So, one thing about Temecula is that it always seems that this city can find money underneath the weirdest places and in the oddest places, but we... About time to start thinking about that bridge across Temecula Creek from Avenue de la Mission and Coronado, but it's due, because there's no more... You can't build where it's already filled out. And that's what I wanted to bring it up, is to move it forward and give it a higher priority on the CIP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. And that ends the public comment portion. For our young people who aren't here all the time, that's a period of time when people can address the council, not necessarily a time to have dialogue with the council. And then, of course, when we have agenda items, the public's also willing or able to participate. We're going to move on to the city council report section of our comments, and I'll go with Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of comments. We've had a couple of very tragic accidents here recently. One occurred involving DUI, at least that was what the report was that I read in the paper, at Ranch California and Margarita, a very serious accident. Prior to that, we had another accident out on Butterfield Stage in Pabba. I tend to read most of my news online, although we do get delivery of the press enterprise as well, and there are usually comments associated with those stories. I know there's a lot of concern in the community about traffic safety, and so I'd like to ask the city manager to work with his team to evaluate if there are additional steps that can be taken that we can improve safety on the roads. I know there were comments about specific suggestions that citizens have about how we can make our intersections more safe, but of course, if someone chooses to drive while intoxicated and they run a... Pardon me, run a red light, I don't know that a red light camera would have prevented that. Last year, we had a serious accident at the corner of Jefferson and Ranch California, and those people had also hit someone else at the corner of Inez.
Oh, yeah.
And then left that scene, and similar situation this past weekend. So, Mr. City Manager, could you consult with your team, perhaps the assistant city manager and the police chief, and look at ways that maybe we can have more of an enforcement presence? Maybe we need more DUI checkpoints. Perhaps we need augmented enforcement, you know, from our motor service, officers on motorcycles that are writing citations, if that's what it calls for. But I think we need to step up our enforcement to the degree that we can, and public safety being our number one priority, I think it's incumbent upon us to utilize whatever resources we have to create and maintain a safe community. So, that's item number one. Item number two, and this was actually an article that was cut out that was brought to me by our commissioner, John Tellezio, but happened to see the story also last night, I think it was, or the night before on the news. America's oldest Medal of Honor designated passed away here recently, Mr. Nicholas Oresko in New Jersey. And if you saw the story, it was heartwarming, because a very humble and modest man who had fought in World War II, and he gave the story about why he had been awarded the Medal of Honor. He and his company had charged a hill that was overseen by a couple of machine gun turrets or whatever the Nazis were utilizing to hold them back, and they had taken many casualties. In the end, he ended up charging the hill and taking out one of the bunkers by himself, and then got hit and lay there trying to decide how he was going to proceed. He ultimately took out the other one, and they took the hill largely because of the actions of this one man. And his friends spoke about his heroism and how he never wanted to talk about it. But I just thought it was very appropriate with Gillian's comments and Judy's comments and Rose's comments. And the upcoming events, we've got this event, October 19th, out on the Corona property, sponsored by the Gary Sinise Foundation. We have the concert coming up here on November 2nd, Lieutenant Danban concert again, to raise funds for wounded warriors. And I just think it's important that we continually recognize their efforts and honor them in any way that we can. Those are my comments.
Mr. Washington, Mayor Protem Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, at the city council meeting, any of you that may have been here, if you're watching on television, you might have seen me jump up and very quickly run out of the council chambers in the middle of the meeting. I had gotten a... We keep our phones turned off, but I'd gotten a flash text from the fire chief in the city of Lake Elsinore that the Boys and Girls Club in Lake Elsinore was on fire. And that is my employer, so I jumped in the car and ran up to Lake Elsinore, and I received several emails after that happened, people wondering. And one of them actually said, "Well, Mary Ann, you know, we saw you jump up and run. Were you going to a fire?" And actually, yes, I was going to a fire. So, I thought I would let you know that the Lake Elsinore clubhouse is under restoration right now, and that we didn't miss a beat. We are serving about 120 kids a day and still providing transportation. We're doing it outside, because we can't be in the clubhouse. So, thanks to the quick action from the city of Lake Elsinore, the clubhouse wasn't a total loss, and we should have it open again and up and running by the end of the month. So, for everyone that sent emails wanting to know, "Were you going to a fire?" Yes, I was. And so, the outcome is going to be good. And we actually had an increase in the number of kids served, because there were some articles in the paper about it, and I guess people didn't... Some people didn't know there was a Boys and Girls Club in Lake Elsinore. It's a beautiful new club, and it's going to be just as good as new again. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers on the consent calendar?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and list our consent calendar items. Number one, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Item two, action minutes from September 24th. Item three, the list of demands. Those are the checks that the city writes. Item four, the city treasurer's report as of August 31st, 2013, if you want to know how much money the city has. Five, Pachanga-Puesca Mountain Day Holiday Observance and Temporary Street Closures. FYI, that event has been scheduled for November the 23rd, and that'll be a very nice celebration. Item six, sponsorship agreement for Bike 365 for the Temecula Valley Century. Item seven, agreement with Environmental Services Associates for the preparation of a supplemental environmental impact report for the Temecula Valley Hospital heliport relocation. Do I have a motion for consent or removal?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item five just for a brief staff report, so that we can shine a light a little bit on that particular day.
Okay, very good. We had a motion by Mr. Roberts for the balance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Edwards. Let's go ahead and take the balance, and then we'll pull item five.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. On November 23rd, well, on November 16th, is Pachanga-Puesca Mountain Day as proclaimed last year by the city council in collaboration with Pachanga. On November 23rd of this year will be our inaugural holiday celebration of this event. The inaugural holiday commemoration of Pachanga-Puesca Mountain Day is proposed to be a weekend day on Saturday, November 23rd, to accommodate a more family-friendly atmosphere on a Saturday. The event, as proposed, encourages educational awareness of the culture of Pachanga Band of Luusano Indians and Puesca Mountain, with various cultural displays and exhibits that will be on display on our town square, in our city quad, and in our conference center. And we are encouraging all public to come out on November 23rd and enjoy the culture of our Native Americans.
Mr. Washington, did you want to add anything to that?
I don't, but Betsy, thank you. I know it's been a labor of love for all of us. The reason we're celebrating this day is because of the actions taken by our neighbors to the south, Pachanga Tribe, in securing the property where a proposed quarry was to be, and I think from that day forward, changing lives in Temecula. And I'm so excited that we are still going to be celebrating that on an annual basis. So, I just wanted the public to hear about the day that was coming and a little bit of background of why we're celebrating.
Very good. Would you like to make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Edwards. Please cast your vote. And that passes 4-0. With Councilmember Comachero absent. On the last motion for the remainder of the consent, it didn't flash up here. Was that also 4-0?
It was 4-0.
Sounds good. Okay. Now, at this time, I'm going to do a little protocol. Ladies and gentlemen, we recess the city council meeting, and the city council then convenes as the Temecula Community Service District. So, at this point, I'll recess the meeting and turn the gavel over to Mayor Protem or President Edwards of Temecula Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call the meeting of the Temecula Community Service District to order, and let the record reflect that Councilmember Comachero would normally be running this meeting, but he is out of town this evening. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, ma'am, we have one public comment this evening.
All right, then I'll go ahead and read this. "A total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the board of directors on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the board of directors on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the board of directors addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or district business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the board of directors addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes." All right, could we have the first speaker, please?
Wayne Hall.
Mr. Hall, good evening again.
This evening, I was getting ready to come to the city council meeting, like I always do, and I'm sitting there watching Channel 7 Eyewitness News. Suddenly, a report came on from the report was the County Riverside put up a $10,000 reward for the... Literally, I'm a little aggravated on this part, firebombing. Now, we're not talking about graffiti. We're not talking about stupid little, you know, bright little markers on it. This was a firebomb. This is a third, I think it's called a third-level felony, and this happened here in our town. It happened at our park, our premier park, where we celebrate the Fourth of July. Well, last meeting, I was upset, and I asked, "Well, maybe we ought to get a reward up on it." And well, to my surprise, Channel 7 beat, you know, I'm like, "Wow!" You know, so things happen. What I want to say is that I had some friends call up, and they were a little commenting. It's not the act that, okay, well, it was Ronald Reagan, and he's the great this and that, and he was a Republican, this and that. And that's not the reason. The reason is the act, firebombing. This is a terrorist act. I mean, it's up there. It's firebombing. I mean, this is beyond your normal... I mean, let's face it, I was a kid at one time, many, many years ago, but the fact is, firebombing is not the norm that we have here in Temecula. I mean, I've never heard of it before, and I'm sorry to say... I'm not sorry to say, but I was born here, and I've never heard of a firebombing in Temecula. The fact is that we have become a city now. We're no longer the little hamlet, the little town where some little kid would sit on the side of the hill and look up at the hills and watch the wind going through the grasses and the clouds come over. We're a city now, and we have city responsibilities. But with it being city, as we also have a higher crime rate. It was also brought about some of the traffic conditions we have here in Temecula. All I want to say is to the citizens of Temecula and to our growing youth, this is your town. This is your home. Would you act like this at your home? I know I wouldn't, and I don't drive fast, because I have respect for my neighbors. And have we lost that respect in all other things as well? I have friends that aren't so friendly, but I still meet them and greet them, and I still shake their hands. I may not always agree with them, but I will stand up for them for anything if they ask of me, and I expect the same of them. But this is our home. This is where we live at. We need to think a little bit more about what's going on in our own city. And as it's been said, if you watch TV, you can see how bad LA can get. Well, sure don't want to see it here in our little town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next speaker?
No further speakers.
All right, thank you. Then we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. We have item number eight, action minutes. Motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. And that's 4-0. Councilmember Comachero absent. Do we have any directors' reports? General managers' reports?
Move adjournment.
Nothing tonight.
There are no...
I have a motion.
There are no reports tonight, madam.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing personal.
The mayor was assuming. So, I have a motion, and...
Well, I don't know if I want to...
Oh, come on.
Second, okay, I'll...
Okay, I have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to reconvene the Temecula Okay, we're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We got one item under city council business. That's appointment, item nine, appointment of an ad hoc subcommittee for Winchester Hills. Give me a brief staff report.
I'll give you a very brief staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I need to leave the dais for this item.
Okay. You want to announce why?
Well, we announced at the last meeting, nothing's changed.
Yeah, Councilman Washington and Councilmember Comachero live close to the Bieri property, but they are more than 500 feet away. So under the Fair Political Practices Act, they're presumed not to have a conflict, but it is there, within their discretion to say, "Hey, you know, we're relatively close, so we're not going to participate." But legally, they don't have a conflict, but they are well within their discretion to avoid even the appearance of one, and that's what they're doing.
And as Mr. Comachero explained at the last meeting, he has investment property for myself. I'm a co-signer on a mortgage for a relative that lives outside the legal limit, but just in the interest of being an abundance of perception of a conflict. I want to avoid being part of the discussion in that the dais today.
Thank you. We'll miss you. Could you please hurry up? I'm just giving them a hard time. Guys, I banter with Chuck all the time, so we just have fun together. Okay, Mr. Washington has left the dais. Give me the briefest of staff reports.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is for the appointment of an ad hoc subcommittee for the Winchester Hills area, and it's just adjacent to the Mercedes-Benz of Temecula under construction, and that's approximately 90 acres of vacant land adjacent to Interstate 15 and Yanaz. So we're looking for a subcommittee to provide direction to the build-out of this property as the property owner has expressed interest in doing so.
Got it, thank you. Are there any questions? Questions, questions?
I don't think so.
No questions, thank you. Are there any requests to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll move to council discussion. I don't mind volunteering for this if I got a second, member, and--
Well, I can guarantee you I have no conflicts whatsoever--
All right, all right.
--anywhere near that, that area, so I would volunteer to be on the subcommittee.
Your thoughts?
Fine.
So Roberts and I?
Sure.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Roberts and Mayor Comachero, Mayor Comachero, Mayor Nigar. I was thinking Jeff Scott here.
I understood. Do you want to second that? Okay, go ahead and cast your vote. And 3-0 with one absent and one abstention. We should bring, now, that's the last business item, but for the city manager report, can we have Mr. Washington come back to the dais, or did he go home?
I would assume he's already left the building.
He probably left the building.
Nothing tonight.
Yeah, okay, nothing? Is he still here? No, he left. Okay, okay, real good. All right, how about the city attorney report?
We have nothing to report from closed session tonight under the Brown Act.
Okay. Any of my colleagues have any parting comments?
Move adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Quickly.